Now we can start.
They were in the rain when I come, it's dragging me. They were in the rain all the while.
Alright, alright, we uh welcome everybody here to our board meeting here tonight. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance as they stand in for a prayer.
Did you want to leave us?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're indeed grateful for this day which we've been blessed with, grateful for the opportunity which we have to be here and to be able to be able to gather here. We're grateful for the moisture which we're receiving and we're grateful for all the many blessings which we have. We uh ask thee at this time, we ask a special blessing to be upon Mr. Matt Driscoll as he's still recovering from his surgery, be with him and strengthen him and bless him with all that he needs to recover fully. We ask thee to please bless us in our meeting or our discussion here tonight that we may do that and say and accomplish the things which would be pleasing unto thee. We ask thee to please continue to bless the students and the teachers and the administration of this district with the ability to to help the kids in this area to become and to be what they are supposed to be. We ask thee to please bless this country, continue to bless the leaders, bless us that we may continue to enjoy the freedoms which we have. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Alright, uh future board meetings. Uh May twenty eighth, uh at six o'clock, June eleventh at six o'clock, and July ninth at six o'clock. So you notice there's only one board meeting for the next couple of months here, all here at this administration building. Uh revision of the agenda, I don't think there is any, uh public recognition, just donations. Got a recommendation to approve a five hundred dollar donation from Ryan Harrington, two hundred dollar anonymous donor, hundred and fifty, the nutrition spot for fifty dollars, Beacon Credit Union for fifty dollars, no I'm getting that backwards. Fifty dollars and fifty dollars from Hopper Lifestyle Farms and fifty dollars all for the Sharp Creek Robotics Program. Can I get a motion in a second? Alright, we have a motion in a second to approve these donations, all those in favor, say aye. And as always, we appreciate all those that donate for these programs, it goes a long way. We also have a recommendation to approve a ten thousand dollar donation from Meals on Wheels for MSD Wild West Benevolence Fund. Motion in a second?
Just to give you a little information about that, so Meals on Wheels, I've been in Wild West County for many, many years, but uh they are no longer going to be in existence and so they actually divided a lot of their money up uh to different organizations, and so we just appreciate um their donation. At one time they were talking about this would be more for meals, but yet with our uh meals assistance and also with not being able to carry a balance, um I did call the treasurer to find out if it could be used in different ways and she said yes, so we will use it as a benevolence fund, be able to help students in different situations, bam. So um she said that was, that was appropriate, so that's what we're gonna do and again we really, really appreciate. Unfortunately, um don't like them not being able to be in existence anymore, but appreciate that we have benefited from uh benefit from that, along with other school districts and other places, the blessings in backpack, I believe we've got some and there's yeah, so they've shredded around.
Quick bit of history there on the benevolence fund, if my memory serves me right, your brother Ryan stepped up, felt that was something that was needed, so the teachers had an account to draw from if they saw a child needing a jacket or better shoes or anything like that. So the one time he was placing money into it and then some of the other board members contributed too. So that accounts there and hopefully the teachers and staff are aware of it, I think they are.
Yeah, um and just to also mention, being a very giving uh community and county, we are a part of the Care Portal. Uh we pay into that actually to be a part of it, but that's an online giving where basically what happens is if someone at one of the schools see there's a need like what you're talking about too, or a lot of, a lot of different situations, then basically they email this Care Portal, the Care Portal sends it out to other organizations, a lot of them are just churches, they connect with those families, I mean we, we connect a family with them and then the church will then take care of that or whatever organization. It started out with the Department of Child Services to start with, uh but we are a part of that too and so uh we do have a lot of resources for our families and so sometimes people don't know about those, but yet um our administrators or county councilors know about those and when they see those needs, they can take care of it that way, so. A lot of different things, plus we just have a lot of people that just help out families too, whether it's teachers, staff, those drivers, I mean there's just a lot of people that help out, so we appreciate that.
Good, thank you, I did not know that that uh fund was there. So that's uh something that anybody from the public can donate, should you, should the school district?
Yeah, they could. The nice thing about this, this is a fairly large donation, so that will go a long way, so, but we've purchased glasses before in different situations or let someone go to, they could afford to go into like a, like an eye doctor or something, um there's reasons for that, so.
Yeah, recently we had, I think that family had their house burned down, they needed some quick, like just urgent items that we were able to help with.
I think that's a good fund for people to know about, because that would be an easy way to help even though you don't know what need, is needed, and that's where the teachers can come in here. Good, did we have a second on that?
Christian did.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
Secretary did their, that was great. It's administrative professionals, they come off too, by the way.
Alright, we have school recognition.
Yeah, I have a couple, and the first one I want to tell you about, this is interesting, this comes from a parent, a North Miami parent uh recognizing one or two of our students and so, you know, we do have a lot of times we have the recognition from um officials and that's also good, but this is really interesting that someone did it, so let me just read this, it's from Norfolk. Norfolk wants to share a positive email received after the North Miami relays last Friday night regarding NHS boys track participants, Brayden Rice and Baden Turner. This email is from North Miami parent Christina Westerhouse. Hey, she says, there, I just wanted to reach out about a young man I noticed at the North Miami relays last night. It was a student on your boys team, I found out his name is Baden. I was so impressed by his kindness and sportsmanship to not only his teammates, but every other team. He was standing by the finish line, helping each runner coming off the track, holding them, telling them good job until uh they could stay in. Then he'd help the next runner. In a dark world, I love to see kindness and sportsmanship like this, it brightened my night. What an amazing guy, just wanted to make sure he got recognized for his wonderful behavior, you all should be proud. He was representing your school very well, thank you for your time, Christina Westerhouse. And then in parentheses, I don't know if this is, who this is from for sure, but not from her, says I believe she was referring to Baden Turner, but Brayden Bryce has been seen doing this too, so I'm gonna throw out uh two of those young men doing that, so. Very, very good. And then had an interesting, very uh neat thing that happened yesterday, I believe it was, Southwood, wasn't half Southwood, but congratulations to Luke Herring, Landon Mitchell, and Brody Overlander, who won the Innovate Within Northeast Regional Pitch Competition with their Sky Guard Precision Agriculture Application Drone. This event was held at the Parkview Mirror Growth Center for Research and Innovation on Monday, April twenty second. Uh Luke, Landon, and Brody each were awarded a thousand dollars and they will represent the Northeast Region at the state competition held at Butler University on June twenty first, where they will be one of ten teams to compete for twenty-five thousand dollars. So congratulations for them for winning that. I don't have all the stats, I should have written those down, when I talked to Mrs. Lewis about this though, she said that um there were several teams that applied um to the different regions, in this particular region, they only heard them. Uh they narrowed it down to ten, I believe, and then they actually won the whole thing in our region. So congratulations again to Luke, Landon, and Brody. Good luck as they.
So what is that, like what is that?
It's a Sky Guard Precision Agriculture Application Drone, so it's uh, I don't know.
They gotta fly a certain course?
Yeah, and, and it's interesting because Innovate Within basically is having their business, so they probably have their own drone and they probably are creating this business to be able to do spray application instead of going over a whole field, obviously, like you guys do, the spot spray, so um I told Mrs. Lewis, I think it would be good too if they could figure out, even in lawns, how to just hit those dandelions that are there, because I think I still have six or seven dandelions.
You can get it in the sprayers, I don't have to go over there.
Instead of going, instead of going over the whole yard again, you know, just have that drone go over and just hit every one of them. I'm sure that will be coming in the next few years, so.
It's called spade.
I'm trying to do this from my chair as I'm running you guys or emailing you guys or something like that, so. Anyway, that's all I have, but uh two excellent ones, it's always fun to share those.
Yes, that's good, hopefully those same boys are over at the meet carrying umbrellas.
They have a drone that actually has an umbrella.
We have a drone?
I thought they closed her off over Norfolk's drive.
Okay, um public comment? Alright, agenda items. Approval uh the minutes, they're at the March tw- twenty-six minutes. Get a approval of those. You got it? Any motion?
I'll second that.
Alright, got a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye? Any opposed, alright. Financial report, uh claims. Do I have any questions on our claims? Are we? Just the biggest one on there, but how close are we? Seems like every month.
Is that for architect? Yeah, it will be every month, about ten months, yeah.
That much, you think? Motion in a second?
So we just break claims.
Second? Got a motion in a second to approve claims, all those in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Payroll?
First two tonight, yeah, nothing in particular, I mean obviously see a big drop from the eighteen payroll to the nineteen payroll and that's primarily because of all the coaches pay outlets and things like that that happened uh during the eighteenth payroll. So nineteenth is a little more typical, but I will say next payroll and next couple payrolls will start having the same type of thing for spring sports ending and then we also have the ECA for um the high school activities and things like that, like um that are on our contract. So those will get paid out too, so it'll go back up here for the next few payrolls again.
Any questions on payroll? Got a motion in a second?
I'm gonna accept payroll.
We got a motion in a second to approve payroll, uh eighteen and nineteen. All those in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Financial summary, anything there Chris?
Uh just a few things to go over, um if, first is the cash balance report, so since we only have one board meeting this month because of spring break, I gave you both the end of the month report and the cash flow, so just looking at the end of month report, balances still look good, um draw your attention to one thing, just so I don't forget it, but it'll come up again later in the year, but legislation passed a law that gets rid of the Curriculum Materials Fund. So that fund that we use to pay for like our one-to-one devices and our textbooks and those types of things is going away and all of that will then cycle into the Education Fund. So now, not only are we responsible for items that we currently pay out of our Education Fund, but now you're gonna throw in curriculum materials into all of that, so um just kinda giving you a heads up on that. That law starts January one, so at the end of this year, at some point, I would imagine we'll have to do some resolutions that will um dissolve the Curriculum Materials Fund and transfer that money into the Education Fund. And then as we get money from the state for textbook reimbursement, now that the state pays for it, that money will get mixed into our educational fund dollars, so now it's just I see pros and cons of it, but it's gonna be a little bit uh of a challenge to manage that a little bit in one fund, but.
We didn't talk about that, but is it gonna be one draw though, or is it gonna be spread over the twelve months like they typically do?
Uh I believe it's gonna be the same way, one draw.
Okay, I was gonna say, because people have to pay for those things.
So just so you are aware of that.
Why did they do that, I mean why'd they close, why is it then going on?
Streamlined probably.
Uh my guess, well I can say, but I have some theories on why that was. Now that the state's covering it, right, I think there was a lot of pushback that it wasn't enough and so I think it hides a little bit better now that it's mixed in with all this other stuff. And so.
Which, they want to have oversight and be able to see what's being spent in classrooms, so it's a little bit to take away the fund, to track, you know, that fund, which is consistent.
That makes sense.
Just wanna bring that out there, like I said, it'll probably pop up again later, but since we had a recent purchase out of curriculum materials when we did our one-to-one devices, um I thought we'd bring that out.
Was that draw already been taken off?
For?
For the one-to-ones, we haven't paid yet.
Yes, remember we're doing a lease for that, so we got our first lease payment.
So that's why the balance is still so significant, okay, otherwise it would have wiped out.
Normally in the past, we wiped it out.
So when do we get the monies from the state for these looks?
Last year we got them and we reported everything in October and I think it was, was it December? Sometime around there. And then as far as uh cash flow is concerned, the only thing that I changed on here uh from what we previously talked about uh is that we do have the reconciliation for our February Spring ADM count dollars and so those dollars are now reflected in the April, May, and June revenue for uh the basic state grants. So we will, so we do see that increase in there uh about forty, forty thousand dollars more a month for the next three months because of our increase in ADM. So I put that in there and then also um we had to give our estimated ADM counts for this fall so that when July hits, they can start paying us those dollars. And so after some conversation with Mike and looking at historical accounts, we fell on the twenty-one thirty number as far as an estimated fall ADM count. So that means we'll receive from July through December those fall estimated counts and then once October hits and we get the actual counts, that money will be reconciled either positive or negative depending on where we're at from our estimated actual counts, if that makes sense. So that's all reflected right now into that basic grant revenue. So cash flow, that's all I had, that's really different from what we've talked about, from the education operations fund.
On the operations fund there.
Yeah.
That yellow addition there, that's just anticipating funding. Some of the building project, the demolition.
The stuff, yes, the stuff that uh are part of the twenty twenty-four project that we haven't bonded for yet.
Yeah, and then the decision made to pay back or just let that pass through.
And I see that you dropped the interest that we're getting, as you're estimating, but are you foreseeing something that's gonna?
So I, we actually, uh I've been about a month now, we had a we always meet with our bank and in a way to see how things are going, what's new, what's different, or whatever and uh they told us that we should, in the things that they're hearing from the banking world, that we should anticipate our interest rates dropping in the middle of the year. They give us specific things, so I just, I just liked it.
Okay, although just recently they came, Feds came, well the Feds didn't come up, but they started talking about that the inflation numbers didn't look good. And so they had not done anything with that, because they were talking about three different um lowering of the basis um this year, but now, right now, it hasn't happened, that doesn't mean it's not gonna happen the rest of the year.
So there's still a lot of uncertainty there.
A lot of uncertainty.
But that money's always been kind of like I don't wanna say not accounted for, but it's not something we've tried to depend on a whole lot uh because it's so fluctu- it fluctuates so much.
I was just curious if you, I'd seen that drop, like that's what they told them.
No, that was just based off what they told us, so I thought I'd put it in there just so we were in case it did that or something.
Alright, uh that's all, the financial, any questions or comments there? Personnel? Other employment, Haley Hayden, uh third grade teacher at Sharp Creek Elementary, effective eight-five so beginning next year, Bridget Hagan, custodian at Metro North Elementary, uh that's starting here at four twenty-nine. Oh, Monday?
Yep.
Four twenty-nine. Rebecca Petrick, is that right? Cook, Southwood High School, um to be determined, we're starting Cheryl Hudson, social worker at Sharp Creek Elementary, starting April fifteenth through the end of the year, I'm guessing that's what that's gonna say?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, this school year.
Right.
Deborah St. Claire, guided secretary at White's High School, uh starting here May first through the, to be announced when, when the end of that is.
Let me just share a couple of things, I guess I should do that as you go, but uh for Cheryl Hudson, the social worker, she actually just had, not her, not Cheryl, but the social worker that was replaced, she just had her baby. We have another MSD family member and then uh Deborah St. Claire, the secretary there at White's is actually for uh a leave for a surgery.
And then we have John Ayers, subteacher at MS, this is just for any MSD substitute. And that was four twenty-four Samantha Griesley, uh paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary, starting four twenty-two, which was last week, and Mackie Hyde, assistant tennis coach uh at Southwood High School and that was effective immediately. Under retirement, Lottie Smith, custodian at Metro North Elementary and that was effective three twenty-eight, and Amelia France, just, or as the school counselor at Southwood High School and that's at the end of this school year and still under retirement. Kim Jacobs, a cook at Southwood High School, uh end of this school year and Deborah Higley Garrison, a bus driver for the special needs, um will be retiring at the end of this school year. On leave, uh one seventy-five, uh the leave will begin May first and one seventy-six will begin August fifth. And I've got a transfer of Noreen Ramsey, transferring from, as a cook to North, uh from Norfolk High School to Southwood High School and that's effective beginning of the next school year. Any comments if you wanna give a motion in a second? Got a motion in a second to approve the HR report, all those in favor, please say aye? Any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
So just wanna um verbally recognize and honor our retirees, so first of all, Lottie Smith, she's not been with us a long time, but she's been a custodian for about four years. Um she was here at Central Office and also at Metro North, um and I don't think Sharp Creek, mainly Metro North and here. Um also Kim Jacobs, uh current year, she's only been here a year, uh but previously she was here four years and then Deb Higley Garrison, as a bus driver, uh twelve years currently, but then fourteen years previously, so she's been with us a long time. Um again, if any of you guys want to sign up uh to get your CDO, your yellow card, let me know, we'll get you all signed up. And then finally Amelia France, uh school counselor, she has been at Southwood all twenty-five years, so really appreciate all that she's done also for many, many years of service, helping our students and staff and all the things that you have to do as a school counselor. So congratulations as they move on to the next part of their life.
Yes, I really appreciate all of these, either coming to work or retiring, oh, it's a lot of work, appreciate them. Uh under reports, Harley Career Center, we do not have Matt here tonight, so superintendent.
Yep, just wanna share, um Chris and I basically, we went to uh the spring regional meeting uh last night and uh we always get to, to review again all of the Indiana code, the new laws, the, the HEAs, the House Enrolled Acts and Senate Enrolled Acts, things like that, interesting to note, so there were uh thirty-two education enrolled acts for this year. This is very, very interesting, over the last seven years, last seven years have been two hundred sixty-five new laws uh for K through twelve education.
Keep making laws, they can't, Luke.
That's right, there you go, that's right, that's right, two hundred sixty-five.
Do they get rid of laws now?
So that's a good question, so um deregulation has been, a word has been used. There, there has been, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give a little kudos, because usually they do, um maybe do like one deregulation, but then of course they have thirty-two extras, uh new ones, so um that's really what's happening. But they have deregulated some, to give you an example, um I know Tim saw this today, but we've known about it, so the annual um report uh for schools that goes out to the newspapers, we no longer have to pu- publish that. Um I've been talking about that a long time to extra Senator Zay, um because it's a huge cost, and I forget what you told me last time, but it was six, eight, nine hundred dollars, I believe. Almost a thousand dollars to have that printed in a newspaper and we know that there are very few subscriptions um with the newspaper and we can actually put this on our website, we can email it if we wanted to to everybody and it would be a lot more people that have access. And so they did reg- deregulate that, there's another one, um we have a lot of trainings that each year that the teachers have to go through and there's been one or two that have been cut, have been cut out, so I know there are some of our legislators are trying this, but then also you all, you find out that there's two, thirty-two new ones too, so that we're working on, but um that's why I can just get on the phone then and ask our school attorney, how's this work? So anyway, um that's all I really have, I just wanna share that, it's so, it's good to sit around and, and talk to other people and learn, you know, we went over not only the new uh laws again, but also went over some court cases and, and it was good that we're not in, you know, we weren't uh printed there, because there was one of the, the school board uh member and superintendent that was there that had their name in the print there, because there was a lawsuit that um pertained to them, so. Knock on wood, we don't, we don't make the book.
So any, any of those thirty-two that were highlighted in? So any of those thirty-two that were highlighted?
Oh, all of them were highlighted, but a lot of, you know, we talked about the literacy endorsement. Talk about cell phones.
You'll see some in the, the school handbook changes.
The handbook changes, we talked about some school disciplines, some truancy laws, some, there's, there's a, there's a lot of them, so. And, and some of them don't necessarily, when you say thirty-two of them, don't necessarily pertain to us. There was one about redistricting school districts, but that's only if it's an electoral district. We're not an electoral district, everybody can vote here at large, but you had to recertify or redistrict if you are electoral districts for school districts, but that does not apply to us. So that's one of the thirty-two, and we don't have, it doesn't apply to us, which is nice, so. And I'll just keep you going. I mean, right now, I'm working with, I work with high school principals today, next week with elementary principals, to make some changes to the handbook. It won't be school board policies, I know you guys love to go over those, but we'll put them in the handbook instead, because then you will vote on those, and, and it even talks about putting those in handbooks, because it makes sense to have the attendance, the cell phone, and also school discipline in our handbooks. And if it's a law, you don't necessarily have to have a policy. We don't have the takeaways. Just either it's two now, maybe three. All right.
All right, that's it. All right, anything from Mr. Drake?
I can chime in a little bit, what Chris was talking about, and Mike too, about the role in the curriculum and the operation, or the education fund and such. So the state of Indiana mandated that schools adopt a certain reading curriculum, K to five. And so we're gonna work through that process here to, to meet the law. But they only chose, I think, five vendors, four vendors, and so pricing those vendors has not been good for the stomach, and so they're very expensive. And so I was just one district who was ahead of us, and they went and adopted it, and they spent one point three million dollars just on a reading curriculum, just for K to five. And so we'll, I'll be bringing that to you probably in the spring, next spring, as far as what we're gonna purchase, but.
You'll reuse that the one point three.
Yeah, yeah. Prelimarily, it looks like it's gonna cost us eighty dollars or so, or, or on the lower end, eighty dollars per kindergartner per year. And that, of course, doesn't cover your math, or your science, or your reading, or your, like, and so. So I think that, I would have to echo what they said, it's probably to help cover the fact how short they are on, on those requirements. And so we have a lot of teachers, you know, we're looking forward to the end of the year as far as wrapping up things for grades, but we're already planning professional development for next year. And like Ms. Kevina alluded to, the endorsement for reading, teachers K to six have to go get that, and so we've got a whole group that are gonna get it, and we've got somewhere to start the processes somewhere, and so we've already started laying out professional development for, for the future, so. Looking forward to a good, solid year, but already thinking ahead, so.
And they're not just, not just teachers that are gonna be getting that endorsement. Specifically, special education teachers will also get that. Specifically, if you're an elementary teacher, it has to, you have an elementary teacher license that's a parent, it's called a parent license. So some of our elementary principals that also have an elementary, they will also be getting that, because to be able to renew, they, that's the parent license, the elementary license, and then they add it on their administrative license, so they will also have to add that. And so not only do you do the PD, but you also have to pass the test, so. A lot of new things coming around.
All right. Thank you, guys. Under new business, we got a recommendation to approve Logan Swift mowing to mow for the twenty-twenty-four season, so for this year. Can we get a motion in a second for that recommendation?
Motion to accept the approval of Logan Swift mowing to mow for the twenty-twenty-four season.
Hold on a second. Got a motion in a second? All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Recommendation to approve the extended overnight out-of-state trip for Norfolk Robotics Team to the World Robotics in Dallas, Texas, April twenty-seventh through May second, here this year.
Scott, I remember that we approved the recommendation for the overnight extended world robotics in Dallas.
Hold on a second, bud.
Got a motion in a second? On the recommendations, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And the last one, recommendation to approve extended out-of-state field trip for Norfolk AP Physics, AP Chemistry, and Calculus students to Cedar Point Math and Physics Day, May twentieth this year. Can we hear the motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? For the field trip for Norfolk. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Unfinished business? Board policy? Public comment? See it? Any items from the board members? All right. We're adjourned.
Thirty-six minutes.